This conference will now be recorded.
Could you give an updated worksheet like you gave us at the budget meeting last week?
I have not with yesterday's stuff.
So this is still your working document, the one you gave us?
Yes.
The one they'll be discussing.
Numbers have not changed unless Roger has documented something else.
All right, well, we're gonna call the order at 6:01 PM and we have all the Monterey Select Board present here in Town Hall on January 22nd and we'll get right into the fire department staffing plan.
So we were supposed to meet on Monday and was it Monday or yesterday?
Tuesday at 1:00.
Yesterday, yeah.
Yesterday and about 15 minutes into the meeting day, the call came out for the Otis fire and they ran out the door to go put out a fire in the building and, you know, so I think it's gonna take till next week to get more of that worked out. I'm hoping that maybe you and you and/or Chris can work with Roger to finalize the details of the hiring plan because I I'm happy to be there if you need me for that part, but I think I think you guys can figure it out and I'm absolutely, as I said in my email, absolutely willing to be part of the interview committee if you want me. I have no need to be present unless you would like me to be present or for some reason Roger can't or whatever. I think three people is usually the best plan for those meetings, so you guys work out what you think is gonna work. I'm hoping Roger can maybe give you a little help figuring out that half the part or you guys can get the information in.
So yes, that, we couldn't get a meeting today, so it's 10 AM tomorrow, we have another meeting set up with him, so.
I'll put in a word that there's no fire between the two of them. I know, right?
Prior to the meeting, can we get like a summary sheet or something to, I mean, it needs to be explained, but conceptionally where you're thinking, what, you know, some, it's one of those things, I'm not holding you to it, but it'd be interesting to see where you're at so finance committee members, myself, can say, okay, we, you know, it's not new when we walk in, we've had some preliminary discussions about it, but just like a bullet point, this is what we're thinking, option one, option two. I'm not sure where you are in that discussion, but I think for myself it'd help me if you've got it before we meet next time to discuss it, you know.
Yeah, that's together.
We have.
It is circulated.
It just, it makes the discussion go, in my opinion, so I'm not there to judge it.
No, no, I know. I think that, so Roger and I had a chance to talk every, we meant to talk with you, but yeah, that wasn't possible. So I I think it's a really good idea and I'm happy to do it, but I'd like to have one more chance to, for Roger and I to talk to these guys to work on it. Basically, where original plan, you guys correct me if I get it wrong, the original plan was to try to phase in over three years. Now, because of their concerns for daytime staffing and daytime calls particularly because we're down one frequent responder, things are limping along, okay, you guys, was it with six of you in the picture, how many showed up to that call?
The first 20 minutes was three of us from Monterey and four of, four of them from Otis.
So I wasn't sure that picture.
That picture, so Alec was from technically Sanesfield.
Okay.
He's part of our shift program.
Okay.
Nate was from Otis.
So it was mixed.
That was a mix.
Yeah.
All people involved here, which is great.
That is great.
Our program, we can help with that, but yeah, it takes a community.
And it was that group that was primarily the group that, it was our shift program that did most of the work there, all representing different towns, but they're all kind of off the subject of employees, but.
So it includes the, now they're thinking to try to do it over two years and I, you know, I'll admit, Roger and I are having some heart palpitations. I think you guys probably are too, it's not like you don't know that it's scary and we're mostly concerned about how the community will receive it. And I think Roger and I would like the chance to work with Chris and Sean to see if we can do anything to tweak the numbers down. We've added some numbers to the number they came up with to put in health insurance. And it's a lot. Like untouched, we're talking like 10% increase to the budget for the year and that, and I mean the overall.
The overall.
The overall town.
Budget.
Yes, and that's a scary number. The flip side is I'm extremely aware of the downside. I mean, we are perilously close and it's happened in other communities. Egrima is looking at hiring daytime help, they don't have any sleeping quarters because they're down to two volunteer firefighters. And Sean told me that there are two firefighting training facilities in the state of Massachusetts for the latest round of training, there are only 11 people signed up. Four in seven from two different classes and the numbers are so low, the state's talking about closing one of the two training facilities. And that's statewide, so we should all be very scared, right? Like, I don't know if you guys are, but I I am scared. And I mean, I, to the point where, you know, I had a conversation with Eileen where she's like, she actually picked up the phone and called Beth Regalbudo, the superintendent of the Southern Berkshire system to to talk to her to set an appointment to talk about trying to run training classes there or the interject or something, just to try to get more kids interested in becoming firefighters, training to be EMTs, whatever it takes to increase our pipeline, because that's 11 people in the state of Massachusetts, that is not sustainable. So we're gonna, you know, there's the possibility out there that we will advertise these jobs and not find people to build up, right? Like, that is a real possibility. But the flip side is, and I'm being honest here, I I do not see another path forward. It's not just that Chris and Sean have convinced me, I just look at the data and I'm like, what are we gonna do, right? We can't, do we wanna go the road of not having?
That's not an option.
No, I don't think it is either.
So property insurance would probably go up pretty heavily.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you have people investing in the building, like I think I said before, there's estimated $19 million worth of permits in this year. And then to turn around and say, we can't help protect your your asset, which some people, it's their largest asset, you just can't do that. You can be penny wise, pound foolish, you can't do it.
The one other thing I'll throw out there that I thought was a pretty creative idea Eileen had was the Affordable Housing Act, because we've been given a seasonal designation, we can actually have a bar type, I bar type tax rate. It's, I know it's contentious, they've tried it in other towns, it's, I think it failed pretty miserably in Lenox. I don't know how I feel about it from a moral standpoint or any other standpoint, but a lot of those second homeowners are the ones building those four or five million dollar homes and it might be an avenue to increase the revenue and lighten the load on the folks who live here. And I'm not, I, like I said, I'm worried about it, but I think it's something we want to at least consider as a possibility to lighten that load.
Yeah, but some of those houses are on Lake Garfield and they're already got it and they're taxed, their district authority will definitely roll higher.
Because it's.
Front inch.
Because they got, it's the same, not really.
You know, I don't think what I.
They don't get taxed differently, their assessment is higher. Because it was like front property. Yeah. And I'm just throwing it up, I don't have a determined ideal and I'm just throwing it up.
But from a little bit I looked, I don't think we can do this, but you know, putting an additional tax on Airbnb rentals.
We cannot.
I know.
There is a limit on what we're allowed to do.
But it's a public safety issue, you know. I have a quick question, I was reading back on the notes, this is, do we ever check the budget numbers to ensure that Chris and Sean can, if we get their full time position this year, we're gonna look at that budget?
We did.
We did, and there'll be some additional funds that will be needed.
Okay, but we're working on anticipating, we we get into the last few periods of the year, we can transfer some of that.
Right, yeah.
Those are some of the numbers that we're working on for right now, just to double check, but there will be a bit of a shortfall if, when they start the program, is there is there room for it? And then, you know, talk and then the county town meeting, figuring out what to do there.
Right, okay. So going back to my original question, you wanted to meet, you wanted to meet with Chris and Sean, what, do you have that planned or is that?
Well, I haven't seen them since they had to run out. Yeah, would Monday or Tuesday work for you guys? We've been meeting Mondays at 1:00, but I'm open.
Monday would work, Monday, if we start a full time thing next week, Monday's gonna be our overlap date.
Yeah.
Okay, does one work?
Those pages doesn't go off.
That part, we can't, neither of us can control.
It'll be like 33%.
So, okay, and I think that.
Can we start at 12:30?
I can, you guys don't have?
Yeah, we're there, so maybe in the afternoon gives us a little time to get.
As far as the overage, I I strongly suspect that we'll be able to cover it during those last couple of months, especially because I think that part of the money is involved, the EMTs, and we have to actually advertise them, find them and hire them, and I don't think that's happening tomorrow.
It's taken us a month to get to this point.
I guess that'd be the, we'd like to get permission to advertise like by the end of the week or so, and that way we could, we can start that.
The, just to FYI, the, there's a firefighter app, is that what, firefighter app? That's like a clearinghouse application for specifically for people that are, is it just firefighters or firefighters?
Police, the original platform was designed for police.
Ah, okay, okay. And it will accept the applications and we have the option to either pay for every, 35 bucks per application, we can pay it or we can ask the applicants to any of the money. And the idea that they floated and Roger and I kind of liked was that we we reimburse anyone we hire for that provision. And like, I'm mixed on, I do want people to apply, on the other hand, I think that we only really want serious applicants and having that, adding up money will dissuade people who aren't serious about it.
But the other side of the argument is it's competitive out there. And two is if they're on an app, they're not on an app because they're, you know, thinking, I mean, what I have heard say is there's been very few applicants, you know, if you have a choice, you have three jobs there and one, two out of the three say, oh, you don't have to pay for this application, you know.
I guess what we just don't want is like, indeed, you can get a whole bunch of junk mail type thing, we don't wanna be paying 30,000 dollars for each one of those.
And we can start out this way and if it's not working, then we might have to change course.
You might have to change it, repo, take it down, repost it. But we probably do have to set some money aside for paying for that, those applications.
Before we move on, so you said Eileen called the school system?
She actually, yeah, she she made an appointment with that.
You think there'd be some opportunity, from doing the school thing a couple of years ago, less than 50% of the graduates going to college.
Yeah.
They're not staying around here. Not all 50%.
But trust me, my my daughter came back from Boston because of the housing crisis there, so it's not like there's some lovely place where housing is being given out for 50 bucks a month or something.
It's all disaster right now, it's gonna take a long time for it to get the wrinkles
It's gotta be, it will.
Steve's been really patient, I think.
Yes.
I had a question, I was at the budget meeting last week with, presentation mostly number oriented and there's some assumptions built into this that I'm not aware of because I haven't participated over a long time with what you guys have. One of them is around the ambulance service and the assessment that we get and there's savings, a substantial amount of savings anticipated by this conversion to full time because all of the new full timers will have to be EMT trained. So one of my questions is how does that happen? I don't know. And then the other one I add was what, still not, are we not gonna have an ambulance coming here or it will be an ambulance for transportation only and no EMT provided? Well, I just don't understand the whole assumption around the ambulance. The cost of the ambulance, which we just got a letter last week, was over 100,000, our assessment to the town, I think that's a separate budget line?
Yes, it is.
So anyway, it would be helpful for me to just understand a little bit about how we're gonna have savings there, what's the change in service to having full time?
So the first question is the EMTs, the first round of fully EMT. We'll be putting on three people now, which won't be EMTs quite yet, but in the future, in October, if proposed, gets passed, October, we'll hire firefighter EMTs, ideally three of them. Hopefully they come, the plan is to get them as EMTs now.
You don't have any EMTs in the department now?
A couple, but they're shift, they're out of town people, so not in town, because they're not designated in the EMT organization, so we can't operate, which with all the laws and stuff and regulations, it's hard to keep up here, to not be able to use it. So the $100,000 that Southern Berkshire's assessing us, we were figuring on the 70,000 that they're currently using, keeping 10 of that for them for ALS intercepts and the rest of it would offset the wages.
That's advanced life support because you don't know what ALS stands for.
It's the paramedic coming in. Trying to keep it not confusing, because there's many moving parts to this. So we, we're gonna work region, shared service regionally with hopefully Otis and New Marlboro, drop Southern Berkshire, Otis and New Marlboro, come up with a plan with them, which we're currently working on, supposed to have a meeting yesterday with them too.
And they both have ambulances now.
They have ambulances now, yes, so when we get a call, we'll still have ambulances coming this way from them. We may have to supply a driver, we may have to supply an EMT, we're getting that figured out, they're also working on their staffing plan.
The towns.
The towns, yes. So where the service is gonna downgrade a little bit is the advanced life support, the medic. But in the three year plan, we have, sort of two to three year plan, we have it set, so we have medics here. So we work in a regional, as a regional group, together, we help them, they help us and come up with as good or better service than what Southern Berkshire's supplying us now, that's our goal.
So in your plan, I think for savings, like 40,000 dollars?
Would've been 60,000, Chris, or how do you do it?
I think their assessment last year, I think we had 70,000, one, one, two, two or something like that. We retained 10,000 dollars for an intercept because we, so all currently right now, if they have an ambulance available for us, which that's not an issue. Generally, it's a paramedic level service that comes, so you have a basic EMT and you have the EMT paramedic, which is the higher level care. So right now, they would run, so if you had a cut finger, a paramedic level service would come even though your cut finger doesn't really require a paramedic level. So we're retaining the 10,000 dollars, so if we have a heart attack or that call that requires that advanced treatment that we call, Southern Berkshire's adding to that call and they intercept, their paramedic gets on Otis's ambulance, New Marlboro's ambulance, how this ends up working, and then they would charge the town a fee, it's a flat fee, which is 300 to 500 dollars of what they've been charging our surrounding communities who are doing that.
That's gonna make their budgeting pretty complicated because they have to be staffed for a higher level on a, on call, right?
It's, in theory, this will help them, other than losing some money, their, their service is stretched thin.
Because they're trying to do transport as well as serve all the communities?
Yeah, they cover Sheffield, Egrima, Mount Washington, Great Barrington, part of West Stockbridge, Egrima, us, those are their first do, part of Stockbridge.
Isn't, don't they cover New Marlboro as well?
And then now they, and then they do ALS intercepts and sometimes primary to Sanesfield, Otis, Marlboro, Atlas. So, and that's done with basically two ambulances, so. So there's some days that we don't get a Southern Berkshire, right here, we end up with New Marlboro, Otis, one call, we went through trying to get three of them, so.
Yeah, Lee's been down there too.
Had Lee here multiple times. So this is a regional, this is a, this is a regional problem. EMS has an equal problem as fire service, so. Part of this plan is getting, say, shared service or regionalizing, people don't like regional word, but if we can help make Otis and New Marlboro successful, we can, we can build a good service around a couple towns here, hopefully alleviate some of that stress off of Southern Berkshire, then they can actually focus their service on Great Barrington and a couple of the other towns over there.
Or just ALS instead of having to do every call no matter what it is.
So by having our own EMS training staff, that would help in triage and communicating that before everybody rolls, sort of keeping.
That helps, that helps our level of care, because our goal will be, let's get, we can just, we can talk about this all night, but like you said, right now, we are not certified as EMT service, so our first responders or our level cares here. Once we get working with Otis and Marlboro, we can step, we can get affiliated and licensed to the EMT level for our department, and then we can operate at the EMT service. And with that, because Otis is, they're in the same staffing issue right now of, they only have part of the help they need, maybe more, same with New Marlboro, they have staff on a certain percentage of the time. So by adding us, we can help them be successful, right? If we can drive the ambulance if we have to, it ends up the time of the day that they don't have a second person for their rig. And then hopefully over the next couple of years, the town Otis gets their department fully staffed and New Marlboro gets more staffed and it's.
And to say we're gonna buy an ambulance, which we could do pretty quick here, it's, it's basically two years before we can get the permits and licenses to run that, to operate that, so we need.
Having a joint.
So having the joint system.
So that's good because there, to me, there's just a lot of questions about that, without having, you have to go through the whole thing, I don't know what the select board is already aware of, but I'm a new member of the finance committee and I wasn't aware at all about that concept. Like, the other thing is a new truck that you bought was, I understand is a medical truck?
Yes.
So, but not an ambulance.
It's not an ambulance, no.
But it's different from the rescue truck.
It's replaced with a rescue, but it's different.
It's more multipurpose, right?
Yeah.
It's the same.
It's more, it's basic, it's, so we, in the scope of everything we're doing, we're trying to reduce, right now, we have a rescue that we had bought 10 years ago or 12 years ago, brush truck, we had ladder truck, engine tanker, and a boat. In the scope of all this stuff, we figured we can combine the brush truck and the EMS, the rescue into one, because we had bought the rescue because the jaws were on that truck. We bought the ladder after we bought the rescue, we put the jaws from the rescue on the ladder, so ultimately, we don't need the rescue to the size that it is, the capabilities. So we can go back to, we had a Suburban before, so instead of going to the Suburban, we went to a pickup truck chassis that we can put small brush pump, small tank on, cover our EMS calls with it, cover the small brush fires that we have with it, and eliminate one vehicle. So now we're down to only doing oil changes and inspections on one truck versus two trucks, whereas the brush truck just sat there all year, maybe you wanna have one brush, other than this year.
Let us hope that that was aberrant.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I get what you, I get what you had, that's very helpful.
If you have stuff, feel free to come over and we'll have a discussion, we can deep, really deep dive.
No, I just, because it does, the, the assessment from Great Barrington has an impact on the total budget number we came up with this next year, what, 450,000 would be the impact of this coming budget FY '26. So that's, that's why, there's some of those assumptions in there that, that might be helpful to have a sheet of some of those assumptions, like.
Yep, we're trying to get there.
That would be like this whole joint service with two other towns and.
You need the bullet point.
Yep.
It would just, yeah.
We will get there, it's just gonna take us a couple more weeks with no.
It's complicated enough that coming up with a way to make it clear and explain it is non-trivial, even for those of us who've been doing it a while.
And then another big assumption in there is the delay of implementing, because you gave a couple of options, delay three months or delay six months and then the financial benefit to reduce the first year impact on the budget reference. So that, I mean, that's helpful to know that, you know, so that, but that's an assumption, so to go on the list, okay, assuming this gets in three months after the beginning of the year, six months after the year, you know, and on that list would really be helpful because it is, it's a lot of moving parts and you don't see them all this, okay, let's take that assumption out or whatever, changes the bottom line.
So the first thing was the, our thought was to split that, do the six month, right? So you split that, three EMT. But then in the hiring and training, because we're looking at probably like a month of training, the new hires, six months puts us into January and it's negative, I mean, one of the, we need to burn with them, cut cars, go through how we operate, so there you go. Negative 15, that's not gonna be a pleasant training, right? So, so that's where, if we can do three month, that puts us into October, November, this year, we have some more decent runners, so.
The one last assumption was the first year using six full timers, second year going to nine, and it was not clear to me. And it's not clear to me how you survive with six. Do you make that up with volunteers or, it's just an assumption built into your plan here that's not clear to me how you do that.
Yes, volunteer, even with the, even with the nine onboard.
Yeah, you still include volunteer conversations.
Still need those volunteers show up and with people being there, we can put some more emphasis on volunteers and helping them and getting them better training and have better organization and having some structure around it. With what we can get in gerbs and drabs with volunteers and. It's gonna take both sides to make this work and.
So okay, so that, that's just the other assumption that somewhere, six to nine and how do you do it with six? That's.
You're limping along, but we're trying to find a way to ease it in. I mean, and honestly, we, I think the original idea was first year three, second year six, third year nine. But the reality of having just three, I mean, can you imagine being in that building for a forty-eight hour shift alone? I mean, it's one thing if you're a.
People to roll out, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And that's status.
To me, there's never been a question that you have to have two.
Yeah.
NFPA actually wants four on an engine, right?
NFPA wants four, five. Yeah, so the NFPA sets a standard.
National Fire Protection Association, for those of you who don't know what.
They set a certain standard for the amount of people on scene. Fire, reported fire within X amount of minutes. So it's not just per engine company, it's. They want five engine companies coming with five people on them. So. Yeah, there's, there's a lot.
Yeah, really the three needs to be five or six on duty up here, but how can we justify five or six?
And right now you say minimum two. I left. I guess the call was relatively recently that I left by myself on the ladder truck because I was the only one coming, so. And then there's a recording, I haven't dug it out yet. Fired yesterday in Otis. They called a bunch of towns. I don't know how long you guys stayed and listened, but.
For a while, yeah. It was impressive.
Right. Impressive on the radio, you get there, the amount of people there is.
Not, there's more in this room.
So I don't know if you caught, they called Beckett, they asked for an engine and a tanker from Beckett, right? Cause we all have engines and tankers. And someone finally got on from Beckett and said, what would you like? We only have two people. So do, do you want an engine? Do you want a tanker more or do you want an engine more? So that's the, those are the days that we're at is we're down to, we're talking a couple of people. We were fortunate yesterday, his father was around, his uncle was around. But that was Tuesday, he had a day off.
The bigger incident, incidents over the last few weeks, we've, it's been the right time, the right place and we've gotten the people to. They've bailed Monterey out. Kept ourselves going, but. There's times of the day that it's one or two showing up, so.
But at the end of the day, we need both. And I, I think, you know, I, I was kind of hoping we could sweep by with three, but I don't really think that's a viable proposition anymore because at the end of the day, if you can't build a truck.
You know, on our side, we're taxpayers here too, so anything we do is directly impacting us as well. We love, we wish that it wouldn't be going full time because it's sad that we're down to this point, but. Yeah, spreading it out over, like I said, three years. We're gonna end up at the same number anyway, so. And I think we're in a time crunch era that we, the sooner we get more help, the best thing would be to hire three tomorrow, but we're the nine tomorrow.
Really the big thing bailing us out right now is a couple of people are in town all the time. But the highway department daytime. There's two on there right now that are firefighters and they typically show up and really, they'll pull away. It's, it's, it makes a big difference when those two show up. We have the other two or four show up.
As long as we don't get a big fire during a snowstorm, we're.
We're okay. Or we might be okay.
It's like yesterday, we got one of the two. Tyler was in West Stockbridge, he was holding a stone or something, so.
Nothing you're gonna do to change that.
Does that answer all your questions?
Yes, yes.
And we're all agreed, we need it laid out really clearly with some bullet points and we're working on that.
That's right.
Plan itself is still evolving, so I was trying to let us get it closer to presentation level before we speed it up.
Yeah, we're a little behind.
We're choice, but.
Yesterday's fiasco.
Well, I just wanted to add in the way, this is not surprising. I'm, you all probably know I'm a member of the church. And we're closing the church's religious function because we don't have any participation. We have money. We don't have anybody to manage spending it. To see that things get taken care of and so no participation, that's it. You know, just, there's just a few of us old people left. And like you said, you guys were aging out, we're aging out a lot faster. So, but of course, a church service is not as critical to fix.
It's critical for the people who are going.
We don't have to worry about that. So I just would say our society in general seems to be lacking in volunteerism and participation. That's just where we're going. And to make up for that takes money. That's all there is to it. So. I don't see, I see this as kind of a foregone conclusion. We can't, we can't change society. We have to react to it. And that's what, that's what's gonna happen.
But maybe we can build some housing up there to house town staff.
Yeah. So there actually is a direct correlation. There's a study done from churches, religious organizations, the fire departments. Yep, and it's the religious organizations. It's, they staff a lot of the, it's, it's coming out, it's, it's those people that are participating and keeping them.
The value of being part of your community.
There is none of that anymore, or not, none, but it's minimal.
Well, that reminds me. I think you want to learn that about that.
Deep dive with you. Answer any questions.
Frank, you got any other questions?
No, no, I think we've covered everything. Keep marching forward, that's all you do.
So do we have permission to advertise the per diem stuff come Monday, Friday, Monday, next weekish?
I definitely think we should get it out there.
I agree, I think we should go ahead and start.
It's gonna take time.
Do you have permission to put the advertisement out there for the, to, for the per diem?
With other people.
So.
So.
Do you second my motion?
I second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meet with the firefighter app people tomorrow and we'll report in what we. Good or bad.
Thank you for everything. I appreciate it.
Also, I, I don't, did I say already that they agreed to keep the rental for facility at the current rate? Okay.
All right. Thank you again.
Thanks, guys. See you Monday. You know where I am in meetings.
Another one.
It's not gonna be warmer tonight either.
It's not gonna be as cold.
And it's like below minus twenty cold.
I don't know, when I saw mine, it was fourteen or something.
Yeah, I like you.
Yeah, Chris. Okay. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Chris. Welcome back. It's great to see you again.
Thank you, thank you. So in the spirit of what Sean was talking about and getting the ball rolling. I think that the town should go ahead and start advertising for a town clerk as well. I will continue. I haven't been here in two months. I finished my first round of chemo, I'm in my second one, I have good results. They wanna keep pushing that. My health day to day is just very up and down. For a multitude of reasons. I plan on trying to come down for the rest of the month of January and into February, just get back into the office. Put out anything that's on fire, check in with Gary. I haven't even checked in with Gary to be completely honest with you. So just kind of revive the office's pulse. I, in an ideal world, I'd be able to start advertising a little, a small amount of office time, but the last thing I wanna do is put that out there and then, and then cancel. So I'm gonna kind of have to take that on a case by case or weekly basis or what, you know, to just get back into it. I will fill in as long as I physically can and, and, and am around. So I've been life planning for anywhere from six months to two years. I ha- I haven't gotten any kind of like numbers or anything from any doctors and for obvious reasons, they don't wanna say things like that. So I think advertising it and, and getting it out there is, is, is the smartest move at this point.
If you have any thoughts of people that you, you know, courts you've encountered.
I rack my brains all the time. Now, I haven't actually reached out, sorry to interrupt.
No, you're sorry, you don't need to go for it.
I will reach out to the MTCA and all my contacts that I've made through my other training sessions and everything. The thing about Monterey is it's one of those, you know, small town jobs with just a small hiring pool to begin with. Quick question. Whatever happened with the administrative assistant position? Still working on hiring somebody. I have someone going to. So still open? Yep. Okay. This is for the select board and the town to decide, but possibly combining those two positions into a position that would offer benefits would definitely attract some, some more people.
And I was actually gonna ask this particular question you just raised, which is having done the clerk job and seen what was involved in the A job. Do you think they're sufficiently different that, so the concern when you combine jobs is always that the applicant will be good at one and not at the other?
Yep.
What's your thought on that, having done one and seen the job description of the other?
Absolutely. And this was part of my pitch during my interview process was the overlap is significant. A lot of the same softwares are, are used, like all of our accounting and budgeting and everything. That's just a total crossover from job to job, completely seamless. And just you know, physically being there more, you know about what's going on more. I honestly, and a number of towns work it that way, where the town clerk is the administrative assistant to the select board or the town administrator. Because they're there half the time doing town clerk work, they are already in the loop on a lot of things. Absolutely, I think that overlap is there. There is value in combining those positions. If you find the right person. I really wanted to be that person.
Frankly, I wanted you to be that person?
I really, really.
I'm putting that out there right now.
Yeah, the timing on this whole thing has been, just couldn't be worse. Taking into consideration my family situation and the, you know, so. We want to be spending as much time with them as possible. I, you know, I, I'll come in. If not tomorrow, then very, very soon. Next week is a chemo week and just make sure that there's no, I'm almost a little scared to see what I'm gonna find.
Don't let this be a source of stress.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't let this be a source of stress, we'll figure it out.
Thank you. I do think about it a lot, you know. And I, I like, I like the job, you know.
Yeah.
And you did a really good job. It was so nice to have such.
Very interesting job. It keeps, keeps your attention, a lot of, a lot of plates to twirl. Yeah. I think that, I think that you can find the right person for those positions, that combined position though. We, if we put it out there and if town meeting's coming around and I'm physically able and we need town meeting, I will do town meeting. It's just very uncertain for me. All right, that's pretty much all I got. Any other questions? I don't think, I, I honestly don't think I can answer a question about the office right now.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it. Thank you for coming.
If you wanna, like, if you wanna come in, that's great, but if you can't come in, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
We have Gary in there taking care of the day to day.
Yep.
So, and, and we'll go ahead and advertise it and, and whoever comes in will be able to put all the pieces together and you have much more important stuff to deal with, so.
What do you say?
All right, thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening. It was nice seeing everybody, by the way.
Very warm.
Thanks, Chris. All right, don't stay up too late, kids. Dennis, how, how did your meetings with the ConCom and the Parks Commission go last week?
Yes, met with the, with both. The ConCom meeting regarding the pollution mitigation grant. It was more of an informative meeting to tell them that this is an opportunity. It was identified in the Monterey watershed plan. And we just wanted to let you know, meeting the Conservation Commission, what is proposed in that plan. And they were very good in terms of understanding what I was referring to and I tried to point out that that as long as it takes place on town property, you don't have those issues that relate to the ConCom that require, for example, a notice of intent and how, why. So that makes the approval process from their side relatively easy. And the, I've had two meetings. The second one was just a couple of hours ago with the Parks Commission and at our, our Chair of the Parks Commission is online, maybe not, but, yeah. And they explained to me that their concern is maintaining sufficient parking. And the particular places for the location of the pollution mitigating rain gardens happen to be right smack in the middle of those two locations. Basically, one on the north side of the entrance off Tieringham Road, Sylvan Road, and one on the south side. This afternoon's discussion. Basically, I tried to identify, knowing their concern, tried to identify a smaller area, two smaller areas that although may have less of an impact, nevertheless, could still be considered that would be acceptable to the Parks Commission. And one involves right of way on the south side, immediate right of way, there's a fence, there's a wooden fence right up against that south side where there's trees that folks like to sit under the trees at the tables. And the other one is on the north side, just as Sylvan Road curves going from east to north. It's sort of an S pattern. And at that curve, there's a metal railing. If I recall, a telephone pole. And it was indicated that the the metal railing and the telephone pole keeps cars and trailers away because they don't want to. the metal railing and the telephone pole keeps cars and trailers away because they don't want to in any way get near anything like that. So that might present itself as a smaller area for one of those. It's an iterative process, and I think we'll continue to talk, especially with the Parks Commission. The timing on the grant application begins next week. In terms of informing statewide all possible applicants, cities and towns. And that will be followed by perhaps either in the latter part of February or the beginning of March, an actual release of the so-called RFP or RF request for proposals. And that will start the time clock for submission of the actual application, which I may have mentioned before is a no local batch application. And.
Of the same type that we had on Houpi?
Well, actually, we, 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 there were two grants. One was a federal based grant, twelve three nineteen grant. That's administered by the state. And the other is a six oh four B, which also happens to be a federal. They're both sections of the Clean Water Act. And we, we proceeded to get the six oh four B to design the concept of the plan. And that gave us the opportunity to go back and get the three nineteen with an already designed concept. So that's, that's the game plan here. And if it works out that we can find something that's acceptable to parks and that would move easily through ConCom in terms of their approval, then the application deadline would be sometime in the first or second week of May. So that's, I expect that we'll have another, at least another meeting with the Parks Commission.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's your major negotiation that you gotta figure out.
Exactly.
The select board, I believe, if I can speak up, you have the board, you know, is in favor of water quality improvement in Lake Garfield. I think with this particular site, it's the Parks Commission that is gonna have to sign off on the location.
Sure.
The only other advice that I'll offer, I think I mentioned something similar last week. If for some reason you can't negotiate a reasonable compromise with Parks Commission, maybe there's another of those six other subwatersheds.
Yes, yeah.
That would be appropriate.
Sure. I was, I was incorrect, actually nine, I think I said seven.
Okay.
So there's.
So there's a bunch of watersheds in Garfield.
One of which, you mentioned also, the Chestnut Hill. I may took another look at that as well. So.
Given how steep it is, it probably has a lot, right?
Yeah, I would think in that location, it, it would be an engineering design that would, it just definitely have structural, what they call structural E M P, BMPs in the ground, like deep sun catch basins and associated bio swells even. So similar to Houpi Road. So that's where we are, and I'll be glad to come back after I come up with something that is more than just a simple report back to you. Something more concrete.
Thank you for all the effort you put out, right? You really, it takes a lot, and it's a lot of work and a lot of forethought and a lot of investigation and then a lot of talking to people and we notice. It just, we appreciate, I, I appreciate it anyway, I'm pretty sure I speak for these guys too.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, and we'll keep on partying. And there may be other things that pop up in the meantime as well. I've been approached by a couple of folks town related, you know. So we'll see how that goes.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
So the Renewable Energy Working Group, we just got a letter from Peter. If there's no concerns or comments, then we don't have to act on it.
I don't have any concerns.
Me neither. I'm glad that they worked something out, it's great.
Any personnel policies that you want input on, Susan?
Yes.
Really?
This has been a rough week, honestly. So, all right, so hopefully the ones that we've worked on up to now, including the ones that she and I did this morning, she will, she's going to make them all like consistent font, a consistent format, et cetera, and incorporated all the changes that we've talked about sometime, we're meeting again on, in two weeks, what's that? Two, Tuesday, so I think it's the fourth, is that, it might not be the right day. But anyway, and she's gonna have it to me before then, so that will be great. But in the meantime, okay, first thing. Family Medical Leave Act. So among the various things we have to consider is should an employee continue to accrue holiday, sick and vacation time during the unpaid portion of an FMA leave, which can last up to twelve weeks? So basically, when they go into FMLA leave, and I should also say that they can ask for it, but we can also even retroactively say that it was FMLA, because sometimes people don't know how long they're gonna be out and it kind of happens gradually and you can retroactively assign it, that's part of the rules. They, if this is a full-time employee, they, they have to use their sick, accrued sick time and vacation time. And they continue to get paid for all of that. And the town continues to pay their in health insurance, et cetera. When they run out of accrued time, they go into unpaid leave. And the idea is that their job is held even while they're out, given to approved FMLA.
That's right.
We have to.
You have to, in federal law.
Federal law.
For some reason, I thought it was one of those things that everyone else has reported.
No, we are not, we are not exempted, we are definitely not exempted.
The whole idea is you give it to them, but you don't, that's, you know, they're taking time off uncompensated, but you can't give if you agree to it, you can't terminate them or take their job or whatever.
Um, so, I mean, there's some exception clauses, but basically that's the option. So the one option we do have is whether or not they can, when they're in unpaid leave, do they continue to accrue vacation, holiday or sick time? Even though they're on unpaid leave, and that is a choice we can make.
Well, there's a couple, how is, how do we state, is vacation and sick leave by the number of shifts you do, by the number of hours you work?
Based on hours.
Hours, yeah.
So it's how you, you work X amount of hours, you get a sick day. So if they're not working, then, then you're saying you're gonna pay them. My personal belief is that you should not accumulate sick time, because the other people are physically working.
If you're not.
Also, you're taking essentially on to, like, sick time.
Right.
So then, did he accrue sick time, or you're taking sick time? Were you taking an extended sick time?
Yeah, and two is, you know, the way I look at it, you, you know, my work issue, you've worked, so you earn this time because you worked it, if you're not working it, I understand the circumstances. A little unfair to the people that do have to work it and do it.
I, I agree, I just felt I needed to.
No, I, I think it's, I think we need to discuss it, I think it's good because we made your questions on it, but I don't think our policy would be on top of it.
Should, um, should we have anything in the policy about, because I know we talked about it being retroactive. You mentioned that, right, you just said this, so if someone's gonna be out for five days, they know they're gonna be out? Or they're out for five days, should they automatically be on family medical leave? So in other words, if some, if someone, if someone calls in sick, they call in sick and they end up being out for five or six days, what, what constitutes family medical leave?
A family, I saw a family medical leave, it's your physically taking care of someone that is defined as a family member.
But it can also be you.
Take it for yourself.
It can also be you.
Yeah.
So I, I think that it is somewhat defined in the FMLA policy. My read on it would be that typically it's not meant for a short duration. So the person themselves can ask for that to be used, but really the point of it is to be able to have leave beyond, do your job held even though you're out, so, you know, if someone's in an accident or some major, or, you know. I think it's intended for that, or dissimilar to a close family member. So although you can do it retroactively, I can't imagine that we choose that path for someone who's out for that many days when, I mean, because really they're, they're gonna eat their sick and vacation time anyway. Why, like, what would be the point of instituting, there's no difference to call it FMLA, except that it's going to use their FMLA time because it has it a full period. So it doesn't really make sense to have them use that unless they need to use that.
Until, until actually comes obvious, I think.
Could you talk with them at all where you could have family medical leave act, like, okay, say if someone with a partner on a highway works Monday through Friday, I need, because my wife has cancer treatment on Thursdays and Fridays and I need for eight weeks to take those, it's not, they would work for.
It's not intermittent theirs.
You can do it.
I think.
I don't, that's, you can do it, I just know because I'm considering some FMLA coming up. And you can, you can do intermittent, FMLA or P, what's P L?
Parental.
The paid family leave. So Massachusetts had, I just found this out because it was very confusing, I was trying to figure out, one of the employees was asking about it. And it wasn't quite making sense until I called the state. And there's something that the state has, which is completely separate from family medical.
Maybe this is why it's getting confused.
So there's a, there's the, the FMLA is the federal one, the state has a Paid Family Leave Act. And so that, I'm familiar with it from New York State, where my wife was living there because she was looking to do that. And so, paid family medical leave is a small tax that is collected from individuals and put basically into a fund that you then apply to and, and can have access to that. Currently, there are no municipalities in the state of Massachusetts, maybe, the last time I spoke to them, that have paid family medical leave. Because there's a tax that has to be collected, and I believe there's also something that, something that the town has to be involved in, has to collect as well. So there's a, there's a, I'd have to go back and double check, but that's why municipalities haven't been doing it. Because there's a extra fees that they have to, they have to budget for.
Right.
But essentially, to your point, it creates effectively a, just a big bucket that you apply to. And so, but, so Gould Farm may be doing that as a.
Yeah, I was mistaken, so I, I looked it up. I actually don't know what that is, but I know that intermittent is an option, so like, people can say, I'm gonna work Monday and Wednesday for the next three months.
Yeah, so you, so you then go, and then there's a formula that you, you submit paperwork to, they then tell you how much you're gonna get, and you submit paperwork.
And it's partial payment.
It's partial payment, it's not full payment, up, up to a certain amount, yeah. So, and then, then you get effectively sent a check, I guess is what, what happens from the state. So, but we don't have that, we just have the family medical.
And I don't believe I saw anything that talked about it when I was reading the policies, but now I'll go back and look again, because I'm not sure. It's a, it's like a nine-page policy that, yeah. It's not, it's not easy to.
But the good thing is probably the vast majority of it is specified by the federal government.
Correct.
So we only have little room.
Right. One of them was whether they get accrued time while they're out. Another one is whether we want calendar year, fiscal year, or rolling twelve-month period for assessing the usage. And they recommended rolling.
Twelve-week period?
Yeah, assessing, you, the twelve-week period is specified, but you, when that gets looked at, tend to be rolling calendar year or fiscal year, they recommend rolling.
And what, what does that, what, what does that mean?
So if you, if you said calendar year, somebody could use six weeks, November through December, and then
And start in the year.
And start a new year and do twelve weeks.
Okay. So rolling would like start from when they started?
Mm-hmm. Um, so, anyway, so that was that one. Next one, as far as I can see, this is grievance. We don't appear to currently have a grievance policy that is not part of either the disability or the harassment policies. Do we want one? They have one, I've read it. If so, I would presume it's pretty straightforward, it basically just tells people that if they have a complaint, here's what they do. And not unexpectedly, if you have a complaint against a coworker, you go to your supervisor. If it's with the supervisor, you'd go to the TA, and if it was with the TA, you'd go to the Chair of the Select Board. That was what I was suggesting. I kind of think so too.
It's common sense, but it could come back and bite you.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just trying to, yeah, I'm in looking, do we decide on the rolling year or the calendar year?
We didn't decide.
We didn't decide, but we should, do we want to decide?
I think I would go rolling.
Take it, you can take your suggestion.
Yeah, I, I thought rolling was best too, but, okay. Do you have any?
Yeah, because it gets, when it comes to loss management, you know, when they started November first, October first.
Yeah.
End of June, and we're doing the fiscal year, so I would do rolling.
And then on the.
The grievance policy.
Where do we have the two other ones, harassment and disability?
Yeah. So we, we agree we need one.
Yes. Keep it simple.
And what I, and the order of things is what you.
Silly, keep it simple, keep it simple silly.
Yeah, that's a better term.
Who was that? Uh, Joe, no, Bill Clinton.
Who said that, keep it simple silly?
I don't know, I think it was Bill Clinton. Okay, next one. The HIPAA privacy contact, as far as I can tell, we didn't particularly have a HIPAA policy. I spoke with Roger and.
We had one, you probably didn't know what it was, because I think by law you have.
I know, but it doesn't seem to be spelled out.
Okay.
Anywhere that Roger could find or in the employment. So, we also don't see, Roger says he's not aware of any medical data that we have for our employees.
Yeah, but.
Which could account for why there wasn't one, because.
But we do from time to time have HIPAA protected information within these walls.
Right.
So.
You gotta have it, it's simple.
And that was my, that was what I said is, I, I know there's HIPAA laws, which in, in their basic sense says we can't talk to somebody or give anybody information in public, but I don't know what it means to have a policy.
I mean, think about it.
I think it's a simple, we should be able to get a simple policy with HIPAA.
I'm sorry, did you just use the word "simple" in relation to a federal policy?
Now, new administration, Mike is going on here in the.
Trust me, it's not simple.
But I, but I, it's basically gonna say things like, it's confidential, you shred it when you don't need it anymore.
I think we should.
We, we should have it, what do you think?
You don't share it?
Chris didn't want you to talk about his health condition.
Yeah, or, the fire department has all kinds of records, you know, the public health nurse.
That, that was one of the things I thought was actually gonna be an issue, is that if we're doing health checks on prospective plays there for the fire department, and I don't know what happens to the health checks for the cops, I have no idea. So we need to have this, the main question would, that's immediate for you guys is who should be the HIPAA privacy contact, because the policy, as they've written it, basically says the town administrator appoint, you know, selects someone, appoints someone to be the HIPAA person, but we don't have anyone else, so I think it has to be, you know, I'm sorry.
I, I second the motion.
All right.
Wait, does Lance become a doctor now?
No, you just have to know where this stuff is and make sure that nobody else can touch it, unless they are an appropriate person.
You know, someone says, what do I do with this record about some medical, well, you say, I'm gonna go to the, I'm gonna go to town council.
Yep, yes.
And don't show anybody.
Yeah, because I, I had said when Susan asked it, I would just call somebody from Maya to figure out what to do in that case.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Okay. All right, next up, I nine, see how much fun it was having? Okay, I nine, these are only the ones that I had to come to you for. I nine is citizenship or illegal immigrant, legal. I nine, these are only the ones that I had to come to you for, I nine is citizenship or illegal immigration, legal. Legal immigration status. I again could not find, the I nine is, the I dash nine is the federal form to stipulate that you are either an American citizen. And have citizenship or that you are a legal immigrant, um, do we have this? Not that I'm aware, but that doesn't mean it's.
You mean a policy or?
Yes, and in theory, any new employee supposed to document that they are either. An American citizen or a legal immigrant.
So I would have to check, I would have to check.
When people start, do they fill out an I nine for Sarah, so that she can pay them?
I'd have to go through and look, I, I don't remember filling one out myself.
Well, what forms does a new hire get?
I'm sure.
Or primarily they get. Well, you onboarded yourself, so that's.
Yeah, I'm still trying to remember, I obviously didn't do it correctly because I was still filling out the form six months later, but. Who, who, well, normally we just, I would set them up.
We hired someone recently, what forms did they fill out?
Uh, we had to fill out, basically we just filled out the retirement forms and then their, um. They go through the, uh, the portal and fill them out through the portal.
Yeah.
So.
So they're on the pit for.
That's why I was, I was just thinking I have to go back through and look at the portal.
But the portal should have the necessities and I nine is usually.
Gosh, I haven't pulled out.
Yeah, but you don't have to do anything like a copy of the driver's license or anything?
Yeah, you have to provide two.
Actually, a driver's license does not prove that you're.
Yeah, but if you get the national.
But you, if you can do like birth certificate and.
I'll, I'll go.
I think there's three columns of documentation and you need one or one and one.
Right.
I'll go look and see because it's different, they look for different information if you're full-time versus part-time. So I'll have to go look and see.
I think we do need this policy, even though we may have already been doing it, we should probably have it in there. Um, do you guys agree?
Yes, I agree.
All right, the second part is, this has convinced me of what I already felt, which is that we also need to have, once we get all of this done. I'm just taking a note that we agreed, um, we should have an onboarding process. We, we need to have a clear onboarding procedure that lists all the things that we have to do when we're onboarding somebody. So that that A doesn't get lost and that that checklist can get, be gone down to make sure that someone was. Fully and properly onboarded. I suppose we should at some point sit down and go down the list of what those things should be, so we have a record of it.
Yeah. Yeah, we can go through, because I, I've built this.
Because we're about to do a lot of hiring.
Yeah, yeah. And I noticed it not, because I was trying to, who was I talking to about, I was talking to, oh, I was talking to one of the employees. It was part-time, who was trying to do something and was said you should go to the portal. And the paperwork that they were told to go to the portal for wasn't there.
Okay.
So I'm not certain, I'm, I'm not quite certain on that onboarding piece, I've never really. Dug into the back end of it to really see how it, how it all gets set together.
But through, so the portal is one thing, but it's also. Making sure that they receive the employee personnel policies and maybe getting a signed piece of paper saying. I received the employee personnel policies and I will.
There's even a policy about that.
And I will consult the.
I'm gonna tell you.
You know, I will consult the, my supervisor, the town administrator, if I have any questions about any of the policies. Maybe even naming the very most important ones.
I, I think that, so among the.
Would that be, it would be helpful to me.
Procedure is something, yeah, the, the procedure is something you should have, but I also think we need a document where we're like. Here are the important ones, because now we're gonna have like fifty and like obviously everyone's gonna go look at the holiday and vacation and sick time policies. And possibly the insurance, but there's other things in there that are important and we need to be able to direct them to it. Because it's pretty overwhelming, I mean. I'm feeling pretty overwhelmed, all right, last one, the leave request process. Um, I, it currently since that if you want to take leave. All of the leave requests have, get signed by us and in particular note, especially noted that anybody who wants to take a leave. That would involve a leave day on either side of a weekend. Or a weekend with a holiday must come to the select.
No.
I, I think that we need to take the select board out of that.
Yes.
I would hope that actually took.
Okay, so S B, remove S B from this.
The only thing I think is the town administrator. Taking vacation because they need to go to somebody.
Other than the TA.
You know, if all of a sudden our town administrator disappears. Disappears for a month. That's a problem.
I told you I was going somewhere.
But no, yeah, we don't want to see.
We don't get that email, you don't wanna see anybody else's.
No, I. I one hundred percent agree, yeah, I just needed your permission to make that happen. Um, and that's the end of the questions for today, except for. I wanna put out there that we might, you know, I was a proponent that we consider making that a full-time position and here I am. Suggesting a larger expense on the front of the town, but it would be.
Are you talking about the clerk?
Yes, the clerk and I, I hate. I mean, I don't, I wish it could be Chris, but. I really would like to see us get a quality clerk, because we've had so much trouble in the past. And we, you know. I would say Chris was really the only outstanding applicant in the pool on that last go-round. And I would like to see us get a good applicant pool and. I think this might be an important way to do.
Can we, can we talk about it under unanticipated, we just get through?
Yes, we absolutely do, and, and we can come back to it next week, but I think that we definitely, I just wanna see us consider it, yes.
Yeah. I wanna talk about it a little bit, I just wanna get through anything Roger might have first. Rod, do you have any time in this?
I just had two things, Laura Worth started, uh, probably yesterday, she came in for a few hours yesterday, we sat down. Talked about, um, you know, procedures, policies, things that the physician would be doing, we went over a few things. She'll be starting Monday, Tuesdays, uh, one thirty to four thirty, that'll be where, where she's at. Uh, current, she'll start sitting in my office. Um, for a little while until I get a couple more upgrades, technology upgrades. So I've upgraded my desktop, I have upgraded the, um, the other table, the other desk space in my office. I'll be upgrading this, uh, here in the meeting room, which is eventually where Laura will end up. Because, you know, she, she's really not here to answer people as they come to the counter, which doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen. I just don't want the distraction and also I have another, um, a member of the community who's helping, Nancy Cleveland, who's helping with some stuff and. I could, she's all set up too, so I could bring her, put her down here as well to do some things. And also doing an upgrade to the, uh, to the assessor's clerk, Linda Hamlet will be upgrading.
So what's the timeframe for this computer?
I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks, so to, to get that done. Um, we were able to get her set up, but that computer was already set up, I just had to get her name in there, so I'm just waiting to get the, the desktop from, um. John Shannon at Epic Engineering.
Are you gonna make a new email or is she gonna get her DPW one?
No, so, so what's gonna happen is, uh, well, she'll, she'll probably have access, we'll try and get her access to DPW one if necessary, but. She will have her own email, she has one right now, we're in this weird transition because of how the emails were originally set up. And the company that it was set up through was not Microsoft and we're better off doing, uh, our emails through Microsoft, we have better options and. And more, uh, it's more cost-effective, so we're in this weird transition where. The email address, it has Monterey MA in it, but it's not currently a dot gov, we have to do a little bit of. Uh, we're gonna have to do like an over-the-weekend transition at some point in time and eventually that will get changed to the Monterey MA dot gov. So that again is probably, hopefully in the next month that will happen. So like currently, my email address, my new email address is R McDonald, so everybody will get a new one, it'll be first initial, last name. But my email address right now is R McDonald at Monterey MA dot on microsoft dot com.
What about, um?
And that will eventually be changed to Monterey, uh, admin, uh, I can keep that as a generic, so there's some we're gonna have.
I think you should keep admin.
There's some we're gonna keep as, um, aliases in that sense and that we'll be able to redirect them.
Yeah.
Like right now, I have, I also have the Roger at Monterey MA dot gov when I was on the finance committee.
Yeah.
So everything, so if you send something to Roger at Monterey MA dot gov, I've actually set it up to forward to admin. So I don't have to keep it up.
So I think you gotta keep admin though, because that's what you put on forms and whatever, and it goes to admin.
Now, so and for example, we'll have something like, um. Eventually have something like say invoices at Monterey MA dot gov, so those companies that we get, um, currently I'm getting emailed invoices. I'll have them redirected to that and then bounced so that no matter.
We don't pay them.
Yeah, I never got it, so that, so that.
Send it back, no longer here.
So that whoever knew.
Made our HIPAA policy.
So that who has ever knew in those positions would not have to constantly be going out and changing where those emails get directed to, so it goes to the one. So things like that, we'll be working on moving forward, but that's kinda where it's at right now, we're in this weird transition.
Everything is so.
You had one other update too?
There's Laura.
Laura.
Laura and the technology, that was it, okay, so yeah, that's all, um. Town clerk. Oh, you did have these, um, did you wanna sign these letters to Laura and to Mary Makeup?
No, no, we don't sign them, in the future we might, but we never have.
Okay.
Um, two questions.
But thanks for printing them out.
Yep.
Any updates on the con, hiring and concomitant?
Um, I could. Forgot to turn to go, oh, no, I.
I talked about it in the budget, you know.
Yeah, so I have, I gotta go into, uh, Indeed and, and kind of take the old one, get it, I was gonna do it on Monday and just kinda go away. And, uh, I plan on turning it on for this, uh, tomorrow, Friday, just to get it in Indeed. I know they've, there've been, they have some people that are interested, so I wanna get it, I wanna get that turned on so that they can. Apply through the proper channels and go from there, so.
And the MCC program director?
Uh, we have three, um, interviews, Laura is interviewing and I'll be with her tomorrow, we have one, we have two tomorrow. Um, and one on Friday.
Two Monterey people.
Two Monterey people?
Two Monterey people, yeah, yeah, and I actually just received, um, I reached out to, uh. Someone who applied to the, um, admin assistant, who's also a Monterey person, I reached out to her, just before the meeting. And she responded back, um, and I'll set up an interview with her next week, so, and start taking care of that.
Okay. That, that's all right. For questions for Roger anyway.
What's the town clerk? Not opposed to being. Combined with physicians.
I'm gonna know what means another full-time person.
One option would be. Well, we posted town clerk like, what, less than two years ago, so go back. I remember we did a really good job description too, it was very comprehensive, but, but succinct, a lot of ones. We get that posted as soon as possible and maybe even. The candidate for the admin assistant is a good candidate for town clerk, or maybe they can, I, I don't know. How many health insurance laws is it gonna be adding?
It's the big question, isn't it, I mean, for FY twenty-six or as of today?
Yeah, but you would, we would be adding five.
Now, um, for FY twenty-six, we would be adding at least two, but we don't know. Because they have the option to take it, but we don't know what other.
Well, yes, but the option to take it, I'm considering as like, we have to budget for it.
Right, so the answer would be six for out there.
We're adding six health insurance policies, theoretically.
Theoretically.
But I thought we were doing three the first.
For FY twenty-six, none for now.
Yeah.
Because we're talking about hiring a clerk between possibly now and then, so I was considering those as. Slightly separate.
So, so theoretically in the. Theoretically it'd be six. If we'd be looking to, you know, if, if you're talking the fire department, sometime within the first, within fiscal year twenty-six. There's a possibility they could hire six people. And that would be six.
It wouldn't be for the full FY twenty-six year.
So depending if it's single or family and depending how many people take it, that's a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars.
We ran, we ran a number based on three family, two would be, two single and a partner. Um, and it comes up about a hundred.
A hundred?
Yeah.
Isn't a family like twenty something?
Well, a family is twenty-five, a little, a family's about twenty-five hundred dollars a month, twenty, it's like twenty.
Dollar per cost or is that the total?
That's a total cost, so.
So they're paying twenty-five each other then, right?
We came up with ninety-eight, nine thirty-eight, thirty-five, was our estimate.
Which is a seventy-five.
But we don't have a new, the new cost for health there too, so.
No, I mean, and you never know, we could have six family plans or you could have two people that don't take it and two singles and a couple, like it, you never.
So we had to, we had to make some assumption.
You have to, you have to plan for the worst and.
Right, I mean, talking to the guys, I mean, basically, my assumption was the officers would likely be old enough to need a family plan. Um, the younger, we kind of based the other one on the younger firefighters often being single. Um, so that's was our assumption and when we talked about it and when we ran it by them, they were like, yeah, that seems reasonable. But at the end of the day, you don't know, you just have to make your best guess because we, do we really wanna plan for six? Families.
I mean, so, but I, six families. When I started on the board, there were eight family plans or eight health plans.
Is there's, uh, what did I say, I said there's nine.
Yes, they just said there were nine.
Cause there's nine right now.
Nine right now, but I think there's maybe ten eligible. Cause we've added a police on highway.
But we know, it's, it's weird, there's only nine, there's only nine full-timers.
Five highway.
Yep, five highway.
Three police.
And me.
You know, the library director, my father.
Oh, the library, yeah, so, and I don't know if the librarians are under twenty hours, right?
Yeah, no, just one from there, but, so it's ten.
Ten eligible.
So we have, but we only have, uh. There's nine, so we only have eight employees that are on it right now, and one is, one is a spouse of retiring.
So roundabout getting back to the town clerk, um.
And, and mind you, my main reason for being boarded and I recognize the fiscal issue is that we had a lot. Of problems through the court historically, right, we've had, we went, at one point, we went through a lot of different people, they weren't staying, they were. They were staying but not doing the job, they were like, we, we went through a lot of people and. I would like to see us attract and keep a good person and I would have loved that person to be Chris. But if it can't be Chris, I want someone else who's competent, decent, reliable. Works well with others, is good with technology, um.
I mean, he's, I think one of his qualities is he's curious too and he, he wants to learn and do, learn, learn what, learn the job, his interests.
And he really wants to learn and do the job, right, not just put in their time. And I don't. Those people don't grow trees, obviously.
So I guess the next question is, shall we. Advertise town clerk? I mean, we can't go ahead and advertise a combined thirty-five hour, we just can't.
I know.
Right, so what do we have budget for town clerk, we had like fifteen hours a week, plus a hundred for the year.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what it was, and actually, it, oh, it went up for a little while for the end of the year. It was like seventeen hours or something like that.
Well, that was a, a minor short-term decision that was made at the end of last year.
So I think it's fifteen.
I'm actually trying to remember because it was either fifteen plus a hundred or fifteen total or seventeen.
No, I think it was fifteen plus the hundred.
So it's like seventeen per week.
Yeah, that's what it worked out.
Was the hundred overall or for elections?
It was just for whatever, but yeah.
Yeah, a whole bunch of things they had to catch up on.
You know, it comes, it's a sickless job.
Cause you were trying to get the paperwork called up.
And presumably a new person's gonna make sure to come up this stage unless they're already very qualified. And you're right, we can't, I, and you know, it's an awkward thing because we're talking about trying to hire now. And I just want us to consider that possibility for FY twenty-six and I don't know how that would affect our. Maybe we put it out there part-time and see what we get for applicants. Um, and if we thought an applicant was really great, we could say to them that. The possibility that we, in the past, we always resented this, but in the possibility of it becoming a full-time job. To, it would be combined. To it would be combined with the administrative assistant for the.
Well, also if we hire a person for each role, it's very possible that in six months or a year naturally due to attrition, we'll have an opportunity. I think.
Right, that one of them will leave and.
Yeah, unfortunately, but I think that's like. If if we, I think that's probably what we do, given we're in a budget situation, we're in a staffing situation. We advertise both and and.
See what happens.
See what happens.
But I do think we're in conversations about next year's fiscal, you know, of next year's budget. And I I want to put out there that I think that let's see what we got in the applicant pool, but I think we would get a different applicant pool. I could be wrong. I could be wrong.
Yeah, but if we're doing the town clerk is doing seventeen hours. How many hours would the town? Um, ministry, you know, the person taking notes or whatever work is that a twenty-three hour job?
Well, we said it was fourteen.
Fourteen.
Yeah. So I think it could go up to twenty. I think you could do forty in the both. It makes sense. Here's another problem is we've put the town clerk job at a higher pay grade. Than the administrative assistant job. It's not a crazy difference, but would we split the difference? Just come up with a number in between the two?
Well, I I think you got that question to answer, but. My other my concern thought is, is it really between clerk and what we need is there forty hours worth of work?
Yes.
You think there is?
Yeah. Yeah, because there's a lot of flex, I think, in things that we're asking volunteers to do that, like we said. Volunteers aren't gonna do like. We've at times had staff. At one time had one staff listen. Take minutes for certain boards that now we're asking volunteers to do if you're talking planning board parks commission. And so I think there's a lot of flex around the edges where, yes, we could get it done in thirty, but also we can. We have the work to make it a legitimate forty-hour job and take, you know, Mike Germain is another example of an overworked volunteer. And that isn't, you know, those aren't sustainable situations. If you're not paying someone, you can't really have.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
In my opinion, I don't know, Roger, I don't know what your insight is, but. Between town clerk and administrative assistant, forty hours, could we put him to work?
We could, we could, if not do forty, we could do easily because thirty-five is another number to think about too. As a full-time as a full-time person, there's a lot of places that do thirty-five, thirty-seven and a half, forty. But we could easily do thirty-five. And forty forty, I think if if they were doing. A lot of minutes work, we could get forty out of them easy, but the minutes.
I mean, I don't know if we're gonna find a person that can also do the chapter ninety stuff ultimately, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, one thing that I.
Thing about the chapter ninety, you know, well, I have to answer the Jim question in time, but you know, Jim was doing that, wasn't he?
He was doing some of that, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you know. Doesn't mean we can't say we have work to do. We can't set it up. If Jim isn't doesn't come back, which I hope he does come back, you know, for um. So I I think that. We're just gonna have to, it's one of those things. It's sort of like you. You have to be learning, you know?
Yeah.
Two is that with the Laura, you know, that we have someone that they could possibly consult with and do stuff like that.
So it had been fifteen plus fifteen hours per week plus a hundred for the year. So basically seventeen hours per week. For the town. So and we were paying. Twenty-six an hour. So do we go? We'll follow up on this next week, but do we go back out?
And so I recall the clerk job, we had a range based on their experience.
We did, but I don't even think it makes any sense to have any expectation whatsoever in any world that we're gonna get a certified town clerk. Whether it's full-time or not, because if someone who's really serious about being a town clerk. They're not gonna come do it in Monterey where half the job has nothing to do with being a town clerk.
That that's fair.
I think we just give up on that and that's why we had put a high end of the range.
Right.
They're not, there's no.
Do you remember what range was?
It's like twenty-five to thirty-five or something like that. And I think we basically thirty-five is very high and we said if there's a certified town clerk out there, they could probably come and. Really square the town way and really not do it a lot of hours like odds are. Just thinking of town clerks in other towns and from when we hired a year or two ago. We're not finding someone with any town clerk experience because the people with town clerk experience are usually. Older ladies who've been doing it for forty years in their town because they're dedicated to their town.
Right. Yeah.
It's not, it's not, that's not true. You're exactly right.
Yeah, I mean, it it's very.
Oftentimes.
Actually, I suspect.
So uh, I don't think we're finding certified town clerk. I think we're training someone to do it. Maybe one of these people that's applying for the community center admin jobs. Has a similar skill set and it's nice that we're getting some Monterey applicants because I think those are the people that could potentially turn into lifelong.
Yeah.
Not lifelong employees, but.
Long-term.
Long-term employees because who else wants to come be? A town clerk in Monterey if you don't live in Monterey.
Yeah, that that's that's some of the problems I imagine is the commute. Yeah, for people. I think that's one of the issues with when our first round, we the one person I spoke to. It was gonna be a thirty-minute commute for them where they live and it's just.
Oh, that's not thirty minutes?
I was just.
It's nothing for me.
I mean, it's more than thirty minutes.
Five minute.
Yeah, I used to give you two hours every day.
I know, but in this area, the next town is fifteen minutes. So you go two towns away. It's thirty minutes. Like, sorry, but.
It's easier driving rather than.
Although, San Barrington in the summer, oh. I know. And it's not gonna get better than or in Boston. Oh, anyway, so what do we do?
Put it on there, get it for next week. Let's start pulling up the job postings.
So do you remember how you posted it last? Cause I I was just looking through indeed and I didn't see it as a job in indeed.
We probably did put on indeed, so I'm not sure.
Have to look and see.
It was, what was it, two years ago? I'll have to look. November of twenty.
No, it was not because.
Yeah, no, it was not.
Because the clerk did not leave until midway in my first year of November.
So it was November.
About like.
When did you get work?
Twenty-two.
This is twenty twenty-five, so twenty twenty-two. Twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, two, a little over two years.
Over two years.
Yeah, I think he I think he's almost was almost two years. Chris.
Geez, we're just plowing three people. What's happening?
Those in cycles.
Okay, I'll keep telling you something.
So I think. Based on that whole discussion that we'll come back to it next week, but I don't think we're gonna do any merging or health insurance.
For this fiscal.
At this moment.
No, but I do, I think we should be having a conversation about whether we want to think about doing that.
I think so, yes.
Or planning to for our ability to do that in this first six. Because if we don't put it, if we want the possibility, we have to put in the budget. For that position that includes the health.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, the reality, I think the coming reality that's coming down the pipe and it's gonna be hard is that. Pardon? Good luck. Good luck is that if we if towns want to keep employees, they're gonna have to provide housing.
But even beyond that, town clerk. It's so hard. So how do you even think it's money, housing, it's just a town.
It don't like the job.
Yeah, it's a lost art, right? In the day of the Facebook. Like I think town clerk was a very respected job of. Keeping records and I just people don't have that. Respect for that anymore.
Have a county clerk.
I don't know, but I I anyway.
Well, so it was, you know.
Not as dismal as the conversation earlier about how volunteerism and churches are dead.
But.
It would be it would be nice to even if it's.
Be able to.
Coordinate something with another town.
I mean, the irony.
Possible.
Yeah, the irony of it is too that like I think there was a time when. Communication was more difficult. Like it started at a time when communities were even more insular because getting, you know, we talked about a twenty-minute drive to Barrington. And do you know what fifteen minutes took on Orangeback?
Yeah.
A lot longer than twenty minutes, let me tell you. So, you know.
The world.
The travel was much more restricted and. That person being very local, physically local mattered a lot and keeping track of all those records and all that stuff. Close by and that's where it started. So the question is, at what point is it okay to have that? Fooder from home and how much of it could you be doing online? I don't know, but you're right. Like maybe we could be, I I don't know, would the state even allow us to do it as a joint service within the town?
You know, we would probably just we'd give win our own town clerk.
Yep.
You know, here's the problem. I thought about this before I just remembered. You can't do shared town clerk basically because election days.
Oh.
Right.
So you could do it where someone would help out, but at the end of the day, you need your own town clerk.
Unless unless you had.
An assistant, a very strong assistant.
Assistant town clerk.
Like.
But then you've got two people, so.
Yes, what's the big deal?
You might as well have your own.
That's right.
You 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 could possibly figure something out, like we could take a neighboring town and. You do twenty hours here and twenty hours there, but we would at the end of the day need our own person who runs.
Elections.
Elections.
And the elections require training too.
From different towns. Okay, you go in my way, you go in tomorrow's.
All right. Um, shall we get into minutes?
Sure.
We just moved.
Oh, I had one one uh unanticipated business thing where.
Oh, do you want to?
Just I'm just throwing it out there. It's kind of a, I just need to mention it. I mean, ask me to raise a question of. Whether someone's willing to take on talking to Hugh about pilot payments or some other combination of the town like fixing their.
Yes and no. I think when we've talked about pilot, um, we'd like to approach. I in my all nonprofits that own land that's it'll pay taxes on.
I mean, traditionally Gold has nonprofit, I mean.
But there's a lot of others, right? Picture just sold or I don't know if they're a nonprofit.
I don't think they're a nonprofit.
But there's.
They pay in taxes.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's.
And I think the other camp has also.
Yeah. We've talked about it before.
I know.
Yeah, of course, we'd love to get money from people. It's how you approach voluntary donation. Do we know?
Well, you feel from a. Yeah, I think you we have a perfect opportunity here because we know our budgets can drastically increase because of the park. And we feel that, you know, we would you you benefit from this. Can you contribute to help us offset this cost?
Do we know why?
I mean, it's a real cause. I I don't think you have to be on, you be professional, but the worst you could hear is, oh, we're not gonna do it.
So I will actually make that important priority and. But it's not just gonna be one. It's gonna be everybody.
I don't.
And I might come back to the board with a letter or something.
And maybe a list of. The nonprofit.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I I think we should we should do that because I mean.
They're getting the service and they're not paying for it.
Particularly you draw it by him, you look how big it is, you know? It's huge. I mean, you know.
I was happy to say one of their employees actually did come by the firehouse and unfortunately he missed the truck by like literally thirty seconds. So the truck was pulling out and he was coming in the door.
Yeah.
Um.
But no, but I mean, it's the cost. I mean, we can show it in black and white.
I know.
You know, here's what here's what's going.
Okay, that was my only other thing.
And you're gonna work on that, Justin?
Yes, yeah, no, I mean, it it's definitely been something that's been brought up to be. Honest with you, I think one time we threw put on the back burner because we were just coming hot off of a of a lawsuit, so um. It's basically been on the back burner since I've been on the board.
Has uh has uh Gold just been paying the pilot for years?
I was told yes, like ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year.
Cause because usually that happens when businesses first come into a town, that that gets set up like a pilot.
Yeah.
But Gold's been around for probably years if he's around.
A while past dude.
But I think he was a little past dude, you know, I don't know. I it involves having that kind of conversation and I think people are often woke to do it. Or they, I mean, I think we should have a letter. I'm just gonna put out there that sometimes a letter is not the same as a having a meeting and a personal.
Yeah, and I met some of the the human. The human people um. From California and whatnot and and even the director now is. You know, I I know and I would feel comfortable approaching, you know, to begin this discussion. You know, interestingly, they read, they definitely read our letters because they did apply to change the name of the pond. Stedman Pond.
That's fun.
I don't know if you remember that little trivia.
Yeah, I do.
I mean, yeah, what are you gonna do?
You know, it won't be Stedman and Stedman.
Yeah.
There will be people dispatching to the wrong place. I I don't care what they name it.
So I never heard back from BNRC about if they if they did and.
Well, if one changes, I don't think they will think it.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Okay.
Minutes, December thirtieth. I see some changes, which I am agreeable on December ninth.
Yeah.
The planning board, uh, I asked if they wanted to make a separate ad hoc committee. And uh. They got back.
Yeah, that so that one was just to remind me to ask you a question. It's not actually.
We will discuss this Thursday, a while ago. I'll follow up.
Okay.
They have a meeting tomorrow.
They have a meeting tomorrow?
Planning board, yeah.
This is one of the good things about having these minutes. It forces me to remember all the stuff we did and send off a bunch of emails and write about some notes.
And then if we just review January seventh, we could probably approve them together.
Okay. Yeah.
They're picking up the mattresses on Friday.
I mean, you know, they're pretty small as usual. So I will move, we approved the minutes at one, seven and twelve, twenty, twenty-four.
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty, twenty-four and one, seven, twenty-five as amended.
Our second version.
We'll call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, so those are both approved and amended.
And I, by the way, I so I heard you Frank and I agreed that the whole plan needs to be laid out along with the cost of the plan. But I wanted the plan to be a little bit closer to.
Yeah, cause I'm starting to get questions.
Yeah, I wanted the plan to be, we should. So this is the current version of the chicken scratch. That's why it needs to be made a little more accessible.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, um.
I hope you don't get hit by a car.
Oh, I haven't taught you that.
No, there's multiple.
Nobody, he's got it comprehended.
This, by the way, was the chicken scratch that came that then had our chicken scratch added to it. So it's it's a multi-purpose chicken scratch. Um, but yeah, it's a it, let me just say that I have not slept well this week. I have been many nights lying in bed, having small panic attacks about this, like I. It's scary. The whole situation is.
Yeah, but I. We're.
We have to do it. I'm not saying it's not, but I think about the people that what it could mean to Nikki Jersey's or Barbara Swan's tattoo. I mean, I I I don't, but the the flip side is is I talked to Seymour about it. He's like. No good options. Like there's, I don't really see another option. I don't.
No, I don't see another option. If you go without.
That's right.
Nikki calls him, nobody shows up. I mean, what's the option there?
Where's Nikki?
I know. I know. Every time she's not here, I worry.
I know.
Yeah?
I know, it's a, it's a two-fold.
Another interesting little tidbit, I keep getting these little tidbits from them, we've had four CDA's the last year. Um, one of which was Delta, technically not a CDA, cause it's a full carotid, but that's way high, and also four cardiac problems, also high. Um, the guys think it's downstream effects of COVID. Because, yeah, respiratory and, and circulatory issues. I mean, it is an aging population, but those are.
Not with a large, uh, data.
Size, no.
Size.
But when it starts spiking, and we know that there was a big infection, and hit a lot of people that causes those effects. And I got someone in my house that had COVID three times, and had, has been having arrhythmia problems since. She's in her twenties. And never had them before, this second battle.
Wow, we, we got a family friend, he still goes, they, they can't figure what, what happened, was it the vaccine, or was it the COVID? Guy's been totally unemployed.
I don't, I don't see how you ever tease that.
You know, he goes to John Hopkins, he's under all these studies.
All right.
All right, I will meet you next week or the week after.
Second motion.
We'll call a vote.
When are we meeting, guys? I'm assuming next.
Next week, yeah.
I, I gotta do it part-time.
I think we have to meet, because we have to hire someone every week for the next eight weeks.
Well, I'm going to DC.
Where are you in DC that you won't have internet?
It's a, it's a country club.
A country club? Oh, oh, you haven't been to the country club, eh? Seven fifty dollars.